To see that there's no funds in those, um, line items they're given. So, you need to be more diligent on looking at those requirements than anybody submitted. Any reimbursement forms, so make sure you give me a line item. It takes me a while to try to figure out what you guys are saying. And then I also get line items that don't even exist. So, we need to make sure that we're looking at the number. I understand people can transpose numbers, but that kind of confused me when they do that. So, I can't read your mind what you want to do. So, I need that to be done more diligently.
Do you think an hour of work sessions enough time to just get a start on? Schedule the next work session?
Well, that's if we have to, we talked about that last meeting and Mr. Wolf didn't feel hours enough. Mr. Wolf?
You have to have a place to start.
Next work session? This start from engagement? You hear that, Mr. Wolf put it on the agenda, he said.
Please, I will do that. The work session for next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay, it'll be done, thank you.
Anything else from the office report, Tracy?
No, there will be, uh, there's, um, other than this invoices, there will be more bills in the, um, in the cabinet tomorrow. Not a lot this time, because like I said earlier, there is not a big stack, but that's smaller stacks.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the fiscal office's report, pay the bills, invoices, appropriations, and warrants.
I'll second the motion.
So, we have a motion on the floor to pass the fiscal office's report. May I roll call please, Tracy?
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we're down to resolutions and we have one on here and, uh, good. And, uh, Tracy, what number, uh, what number is that one, seven two?
Yeah, that was seven two.
So, um...
Especially on the back of departmental reports.
So, um, we have a resolution on the floor, resolution two oh dash oh seven two. Jefferson Township Ward Trustees certify delinquent waste collection bills to Montgomery County Auditor's Office. So, do you need to read all this? Can you give me a short version, Tracy, do you need to read this?
Can you help me out, Mr., because I've just got a yellow up and I have...
So, uh, well, whereas we have nine hundred forty-eight residents, owners who are responsible for paying for trash, have failed to pay their invoices, usually by the C of Dayton. Nine hundred forty-eight with delinquent trash accounts. And they want to be able to move forward to the county auditor's office to be assessed on property listing or operating. Who are able to do this? Right, okay.
I have a thirty-one on my detail. So, I have a flash drive I was given with how those residents who didn't, uh, pay the property tax, I put it in the record. Uh, and then we just certified us to be on the tax bill.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two oh dash oh seven two.
I'll make a second motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution two oh dash oh seven two. Uh, any questions?
Yes. I thought we got a letter from City Department stating that they were no longer going to do this and that they weren't going to assess taxes anymore for the delinquent properties. Everybody recall that letter? Who initiated this?
The City of Dayton annually has done this traditionally, and Tracy can speak for this as well. This is an annual thing that the city has done. It's the only recourse that they have to recover the money because they provide the service at all times. You may be referring to something that was discussed with the Director of Public Service about taking cans away from properties that are vacant and no longer charging a vacant property because you keep building, building, building fees and no one's ever going to pay those fees. They are starting to recover those trash receptacles from those facilities, but this is the current list of clientele and who has not paid. There is a positive to this, I don't have the exact figure, but last year it was about twelve hundred. People didn't pay. This year, Mike, you said nine something.
Yep.
So, we're down, and some of that might be, Mr. McGuire, you know, that they removed that many cans. It could be a situation where that many people paid up their bills. But this is an annual process you have to do because it's a public utility and it's part of your trash district.
As long as they initiate it, I'm okay with it. I just, I remember that letter and I just want to make sure.
All right, go please, Tracy.
Trustee McLaughlin?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yes.
Motion carries. Hey, so next we have departmental reports. Uh, first on our list is Code Reforcer.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I, forty-two toll inspections, eight new violations, and that's in addition to all the high grass. Um, I sent over the second round of grass cuttings, so a lot of those problems will be getting cut again. Um, one oh two long crest was an issue. Um, I stickered thirty cars there. Uh, the owner has been steadily removing those cars. Uh, Friday I was out there and he was down to three. I went back out there today and the same three are there. Uh, if they're still there tomorrow, I'll call Sandy and have those towed out of there. Uh, sticker seven at fifteen page and they've all been removed. Uh, Infirmary Road, I'm going to meet with Greg Spears, who's the prosecutor, next Tuesday on September the eighth to discuss those cases that I sent over there. Um, I did get, um, with Captain Flag, I did give Captain Flag, and we think we got identifiers on Peter Griffith. Uh, so I'll meet with him next Tuesday on that. Um, I finished a news's letter, I'm sending it over to legal for them to review. Uh, fifty-nine-one Ultra, Ultra has been a problem for a while. Uh, I finally did make contact with the owner. It was kind of a, I got help from Captain Flag on that too. And, uh, I'm working with him on getting some of those issues taken care of there. He's got rid of some cars he had there. Uh, he moved one next door, I stickered that one, got it out of there. Um, the last trustees meeting, one thirty-nine county met, that was mentioned, that is cleaned up. Uh, and then the residential beautification award winner was sixteen seventy-six Hopewell. And that's all I have.
Next one is Sheriff's Department. Captain Flag, please.
Thank you. Um, we're going through a CAD upgrade and dragging on for the better part of a week, so my normal statistics won't be in for a few days as that gets ironed out. Ended up taking a little longer than they anticipated, so I'm going to just kind of go over a couple of things, uh, updates, and I'll push that other, that other one out later. Statistics from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, there were eight crashes in Jefferson Township during August. It's a decrease of two over this time last year, or twenty percent. So, you have a minor injury, uh, two serious injuries, and five were property damage crashes. And one of the crashes was alcohol and drug related. Two of them were hit and run. No roadways cleaned by the M A work crews during August due to the temporary suspension of the work programs through stop. We have the guy that is normally assigned to those litter collection, um, details working kind of, he is with the Environmental Crimes Unit, so he's specifically working to address, um, problem areas in the township. Um, we've been dealing with the Family Dollar trash up along Third Street. It still looks like a mess today, but it's a little better than it was a couple of weeks ago. Um, that's been kicked up to the regional management to try to solve, and we're going to have them, uh, take care of getting that cleaned up, come up with some kind of solution to keep that under lock and key to where people aren't rifling through the dumpsters, and get the fence line cleaned up about around the rear of Olive Hills. Um, we had some tires dumped in the land town plat last week. One of our friends from across the side, Third Street, and we're, uh, Trotwood, drug a truck cab full of tires across Third Street into our side of the township and dumped them into the plat. We were able to, uh, use a little detective's work and follow the, uh, marks he left on the asphalt back at his front doors. And, uh, he was arrested for the, uh, for the felony tire dumping, uh, that was, you know, yeah. Road crew was able to come out, help us get that cleaned up, so that site's been remediated and, um, taken care of. In July, at the end of July, we had a shooting in the Bricker plat, three hundred block of Bricker. An individual was struck with, uh, possibly some buckshot from another individual. And we did, we did, uh, identify suspect on that, presented charges to the prosecutor's office, which were accepted and warrant was issued for the suspect, and he was, uh, located in Vandelia two weeks ago and is currently incarcerated at the county jail. We participated in a six-hour traffic blitz along the US thirty-five corridor last Wednesday. Issued twenty-three citations for twenty-one traffic stops, thirteen of those for speed, three for seat belts, and four for no well. OSP, Trotwood Dayton also participated in that traffic blitz. Overall, there were ninety-some speed citations issued, of which forty-plus were offenses twenty miles an hour over the speed line. So, a productive day on that end. Uh, the only other thing I have is, uh, I think we're about at the point where we're going to turn the new crime watch signs over to the, uh, road department. We've switched out what, uh, what's within our non-mechanical capabilities to handle. Some of the other stuff is rusted up pretty bad, and, um, we got the bulk of it throughout the township updated, so you guys will have the stock to replace the remains for you. I know there's some in the birdland plat that still need to be addressed, and then whatever new areas that, uh, we want to push them out to. And that's all I have, unless somebody has any questions for me.
What is the regulation on, for lack of a better word, panhandling?
Uh, we, we...
Beggars?
That's a sticky one. There is none.
Okay.
So, unless there is a, so like the City of Dayton adopted an ordinance, canceled the ordinance, and then I think they semi-adopted another ordinance, but we don't have that kind of ability out here as a township. Um, if it's a traffic hazard, if they're in the roadway creating a traffic hazard, we can address that. But actually, somebody just panhandling, we cannot...
Okay, the, the two spots, it is kind of a traffic hazard. It's where you get off, what do I want to say? Where you get off thirty-five to get off to Gettysburg. And where you get off, or where you get on to thirty-five off of Gettysburg.
So, if they're in the roadway, that's what I mean?
Yes, there's one gentleman that sits on the medium with his leg hanging out.
Okay.
I mean, I know you guys can't be there all the time, but those two specific spots, yeah.
Okay, so that's in the City of Dayton?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. But you're the sheriff, so that's why I'm asking.
We are, we are. Um, you know, there's not going to be in any time a, uh, resolution in place that allows anybody into the, into the roadway. That's a pedestrian in the roadway, so that would in theory be a violation, so...
Yeah, but one guy, he's sitting way down there walking, dude, do you realize you could get in one of those? And then the one guy runs you over.
Okay.
Yep.
What, what, um, what's been, I don't know, I might not have been just from township, but it sounds like it's awful close, because I'm in a, kind of in a city of township. But there's a lot of fireworks still going on. And I'm not sure, what, what do we do about reporting that?
So, if you guys, somebody that's out there lighting off fireworks, you know, you can call the non-emergency line for the City of Dayton or the Sheriff's Office, what, you know, whichever, it's all in the same building, and you can report it. And it is not a, uh, it's not a priority one response for us by any means. So, if we've got anything of significance going on anywhere else, we'll pick that up when, uh, when we get to it in the, in the list. Now, if it's just a busy night and, um, we may take it as a, as a broadcast, so, and, you know, somebody may not respond for hours, depending on what's going on. Um, you know, they, there's a whole series of designations for call priority, and, you know, that's just not one that's high on the list. But if it's happening, call it in. If somebody doesn't show up the first time, or they show up after the fact, you know, call it in the next time, and eventually we'll, you know, catch up with them. Or if you know where it's coming from, just let us know, we're going to knock and talk.
There's another incident, I think finally, everybody kept stopping in the accent park drive because there's a house, I live in the birdland over there, and there's a house that's right across state liberty that had a tree, and I think what we finally figured out, they were burning the stump.
There was a stump.
And they were doing it for like a week.
Yeah.
So, finally I saw the sheriff out there a few days ago.
Yeah, we went out with, uh, the town chief here and talked to the owner, and, you know, it was, the issue for us became, uh, non-attendance of the fire, I think, was the main...
Yeah, they were, they were doing that, no cars, and they're driving, nobody was there. But then that day I seen a guy come out, and he was sitting out there with lunch box almost, I think. Sitting out there with two, but every day people would sit there, and when I'm coming out, I'm, what are they doing? Then I noticed smoke was coming out of the tree stump. And then finally, the last day, when I think the tree had fallen apart, and then somebody was sitting out there. But the sheriff at that time was sitting out. That was just weird, because I thought at first that he was burning it, the first day I saw it.
Nobody wants to pay for that stump ground here.
Over in the Bricker area on Kelton, uh, people are getting the idea they're going to start to dump the stuff back there.
We've already been back on Kelton across from, uh, between Bricker and, uh, Parsons. We've already been back in the woods and generated several reports on what we found back there.
There's already a couple of new tires since the day before yesterday, and I'd like to talk to somebody about getting a camera. Because trash police.
What's, uh...
It seems like they're getting ready to escalate. They have their moments, they're like, okay, it's cool.
You know where it's coming from?
Can't.
If you want to step out there and give them the guy's information?
They pull it back there in the middle of the night, and our camera doesn't catch them, but they'll pull back here, dump it, split. Uh, the last big load they did give them, I think.
Okay.
Uh, but they're, I think they're getting ready to, to, um...
If you want to jump out there and give the guys your information, so it's not on the public record, I can, uh, have Deputy Aiken call you tomorrow and, uh, we'll figure something out from there.
Yeah, they have to keep four hundred blocks of road.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, there's a pole up there, perfect one, and you can, and then make a hit of this.
So, you've seen some of these trucks?
Pardon?
Have you seen, you've seen some of these trucks?
Oh, you can't, there's so much traffic, and it seems like they're windy, but you cannot determine exactly who it is. They do it in the middle of the night. Yep, there's nukey about, some of them, they just pull up in front of your house and go, hey, we're going to dump trash.
Some of them walk a mid-distance in there.
Some of them would do.
Oh, seriously?
Yeah.
There's some stuff pretty rough.
It's not, it's, you know, it's, it's out of our line of sight anyways. Orange shrubs covering the whole street on that side, so we wouldn't be able to, we'd have to sit out there. And I'm not going to pay for a camera, when, you know, it's...
We discovered that, I'm looking for the shoes.
Uh, so, yeah, they, they don't come out and get a hunk of water and go, we're going to dump trash. But, uh, it's not something that we can police. We, we don't just sit there all day on our asses and watch the road.
No, but like, uh, truck loaded over the cab or junk, or something grabbing its assholes with shingles hanging off the back or something like that, just something obvious jumping out at you. Because I know there's, it's end of the lanes. I think it's where Long Crest hooks around, they like to dump shingles in the heat. Something on some of the streets towards the back.
Yeah, and Kelton is, one side it's woods, and it's perfect opportunity for them because they're covered on both sides on that street, orange shrubs and woods on the other side. So, it gives them the impression that nobody's going to see anything of it. And we do have one neighbor that cares, and he's starting to watch it. But, you know, we can't be expecting to police that, because it's not.
Well, if you see something coming loaded down and leave empty, you know, and you can jot down a tag or something that just happens to be at the right time and catches your eye, feel free to pass that on to us, because if we do catch it, you know, on a camera or something, and, you know, or run the tag and they're known to us, we will, you know, follow up on it.
Have you, have you taken the time to form a little neighborhood watch group? Because like on our street, we had some trouble, we formed a group. Everybody shared their phone numbers and emails, and you get used to who's following and who's not normally there. And so, you get a lot of chatter going between neighbors when something looks funky, or a neighbor sees something, he's up late, calls your attention to it. And it's been pretty effective for us, like they ditched a car, and we could have the sheriff shot there in like under five minutes.
Yes, all of us communicate, but like the city, it's a very dark area, and you drive back through there, you could sneak through there, nobody'd ever see you if you do it right.
There are not enough neighbors. There are more abandoned houses trashed up in that one section. There is not enough neighbors to, to have a network like that.
And there's a lot of good people that want to see that little neighborhood come up better, and, you know, for, and there's people who think that it's just trash, so we can go dump it in there anyways. It's not. Everybody, I, I bet there's probably two people in that whole neighborhood now that don't give a crap. And they're vendors, and usually they're on public assistance. They just don't care. Everybody else is trying to bring that up, so, you know. It's a, it's a rough job when they're trying to do that, and then you have people just dumping stuff. And I can't afford to get it emptied out, and I'm not going up the street. So, the only solution, yes, we all communicate, but it is, there are a few neighbors in that area. It's just one of those places, you can drive back through there and nobody'd ever see you. You know, you know, it's like that here.
It's like being at the dead end of the plat, pretty much, so, but, uh, yeah, we'll work with you on it. So, just make sure they get your information, we'll be in touch tomorrow.
Yeah, because somebody just dumped some tires the other day, and, you know, it's just, it was, maybe somebody puts a pile there, and somebody else goes, oh, it's okay.
Yeah, the broken windows theory.
Yeah, broken windows, glass, they, they blocked the street before.
Okay, that's another one.
The bad guys are smart, and sometimes the bad guys are smart, and sometimes they know the rhythm of the trolls. So, that's part of the reason that we don't advertise the fact that we're using technology to try and enforce that. So, it should start bearing fruit, right?
Maybe soon this week, we'll see.
Yeah, I'm all for that, because, you know, we just can't police that neighborhood that way.
Well, when, when that was pitched to the trustees, Dayton's had really a high percentage success on their use, so we're looking to see the same thing happen.
And as far as the people that do that stuff, they don't usually do anything other than have time to sit around and think about how can we do that, so I agree with that. They do, they, and they're smart about it. You know, but they're stupid about it too, I think. Leave that envelope, that fingerprint, you know, somebody got it on the...
Or the drag mark from the front door.
Drag marks to the front door. Well, the guy that hit the guy up here, they, he had his trailer, and, you know, we, our camera and our car, they didn't catch it for some reason, you know, but we knew he was dragging a trailer, and you guys were right on him. So, did you ever catch the guy hitting the flag SUV? Hitting around and about to pick up truck and trailer.
Recently?
Turned around, then, what was that, three weeks ago?
You know?
Four weeks ago. It was in the month, you, it's in your statistics there, but...
Yeah.
He had a trailer, and he was, tore, tore his truck up, so he turned around and fled this way over here in the Trotwood.
I'll have to, I'll have to talk to the daytime traffic investigator for sure.
Yeah, so hopefully they got him.
Thank you, Captain Flag. Okay, next is zoning report, uh, Mr. John Calligan, he gave us his report. He made it this evening, um, he's bored to prepare this report today. Uh, August activity, he did not have a meeting in August. Uh, zoning certificates, he issued a zoning certificate for forty-one sixty-one Germantown Pike, a retail, retail T-shirt shop. He had seventeen phone calls, twelve emails, and he worked thirty-two hours. So, next is the road department, Mr. Wolf.
Wasn't the, uh, September BZA canceled?
Yes.
Yes, and, uh, Trustee McLaughlin, I'd like to add two things to that zoning report. One, uh, he also, him and I both got a message from a gentleman that owns property on Diamond Mill Road asking about the construction of a pond. So, we went to Montgomery County and Soil and Water District, they manage our stormwater district, and we got with and helped to that gentleman to know what the steps are to apply to build a pond on Diamond Mill. The other thing, which is a very sad situation, those that don't know, um, uh, Monday morning, the president of the Jefferson Township Zoning Commission, Mr. Edgar Sherman passed away.
He's BZA.
Oh, BZA, I apologize, BZA, so he passed away. And, uh, very sad for the family, so please all keep the, the family in your prayers, and if you want to watch in the paper for his obituary, we've not seen it yet. The township's going to send their condolences and actually go, if there's a funeral, we're going to be sending staff to be able to be there, because, you know, we lost another dedicated person to the community. That's all I have for that report. Road Department, you have my reports for both road and administration in front of you. The biggest highlight besides, uh, what the road department's been doing, they're, they finally got the tractor back and they're cutting back in the, in the drexel plaques, all the bushes, the trees, as far as up as they can get. They're doing a complete pushback beyond the curb, um, of cleaning that up. They also had Mr. McLaughlin went and saw a resident on the pinnacle, and, and, and the resident needed some help in terms of cut back of their sightlines and a possible sign. Uh, the trusted, the staff went out and, and helped that gentleman, uh, got that done. And the other thing on the road department is, out of existing stone that we had in different service yards down at Blairwood Park, there's now a parking lot for the families to park at Blairwood and go into Blairwood instead of parking on grass and getting stuck in the mud. There is a nice little parking lot, uh, right by Blairwood Park. So, we're encouraging the residents to use Blairwood more often, and, and we're actually hearing and seeing from the neighbors that they, they are now using Blairwood a little more. Um, that's, uh, you have all my reports, it's five papers on each one, um, and that's the end of the road report tonight.
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the signs of the sheriff department, several of them, as I drive through the township or basically on my way to the township office, some of them are kind of knocked over, or trees are blocking. So, I don't know if that's the road department's, or the...
No, you're talking about stop signs, are you talking about the, uh...
Just the, the signs the sheriff have recently put up.
Okay, well, we can, we can get with you and, and see where all those locations are, and we can cut back around each of those poles, as long as there are roads. If it's the county or the state, we're not allowed to go onto those roads and cut those roads. So, we'll have to get with Captain Flag, we'll do that.
And then, like I said, there's a couple on the, kind of, I think, I guess, and I hit them, they're knocked down already. Not knocked down, but knocked sideways, but, uh, I might have hit them.
Do you know what streets those are on, so we could go look at?
I think there was actually one on Birdland, right when you're coming off of the primary road. It's not, totally knocked down, it's kind of...
We could, we'll address that one, Tracy, and if you can find or, or go by those others, call me. We'll go off, we'll straighten them up, or whatever. That's, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, so, next thing is comments by citizens, and, uh, you have to order this paper.
I might have forgotten the party card.
Oh, sorry. I didn't have that. Yeah, that's it, that's it.
She okay? Yeah, I just said you okay, she said you okay, so, okay. Take care, Pam, thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, person?
Starting to develop a complex. Good evening, everyone. Trustees, Ms. Edwards, Mr. Wolf, happy citizens, appreciate you coming. Since the last meeting, we worked on paying bills, of course, monthly occurrence, actually a daily occurrence. Responded to emails. We had a structure fire on Bricker previous Saturday, not this past, but before. And I want to address some rumors. I've been hit many, many phone calls. We were there. For some reason, there's a rumor out that Jefferson did not respond to that. The duty crew was there, Engine Sixty was there, and I responded from home in West Carrollton, so Jefferson was there. We did have mutual aid with Dayton and Tropwood and Marine, I believe. But your fire department was there on that. First ones on the scene. We participated this afternoon, as Mr. Wolf spoke earlier, about the Frazier, the ambulance company that's re-chassing our medics, had a great video conference where they went around with an iPad, and they showed us every compartment, turned every knob, pushed the buttons, made the sirens. I mean, most of their customers are doing this rather than sending a representative because of the COVID, the travel, and then the hurricane. So it was decided that we wanted to do a video conference, and very impressive vehicles. They will be shipped out on September the eighth and should arrive here on property the tenth or the eleventh. Both AFG grants that we attempted were formally accepted. Your fire department was awarded sixty-eight thousand and thirty-nine dollars to purchase extrication equipment. These are lightweight handheld battery-powered extrication equipment for cutting open vehicles, removing the vehicle from the patient. We also received a grant for a new medic, one hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred and four dollars. We have lost two firefighters in the last two weeks, former firefighters of this department. Captain Skip Esken had been on, I believe, forty-seven years, and firefighter EMT Don Welch. Both of them have been away from the department for three to five years, I believe. Captain Esken's family reached out to me, and we were able to accommodate them. We cleaned up Engine Fifty-Nine, shined it up, and I drove it to the church where I performed the last alarm. Had Regional Dispatch Center dispatch Captain Esken, and he did not respond, and he's responded to his last alarm. We then drove, drove the engine in the funeral procession through the drexel area here out to the funeral. They were very, very appreciative. Resolutions, we handled those earlier, paying our commission for the sale of Rescue Sixty-One, and then firefighter Evans, who's moving to South Carolina, his resolution for his resignation. Station maintenance, Butler Heating and Air installed a new furnace yesterday and today at Station Fifty-Nine. There is a problem with the propane tank out back, has excessive pressure. I called propane, Apollo propane today. They said it is our regulator, but we've been such a good customer, and she said she remember a fire, fire chief man there from years ago, so they're going to come out and try to take care of us and handle it. So we appreciate that. So once that's taken care of, then I'll call Butler and get them to finish off the furnace. While they were there, their technician inspected the two four-stair.